Call the meeting to order. Before we do the pledge in moment of silence, got some students from Riverdale's government class here, like to recognize them. If you guys would just stand, good opportunity to get your face on your mug on television here. There you go. Glad you're here. Glad you took interest in county government. Thank you. Okay, tonight will be led in the pledge by Mr. Frank Kep.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we'll observe a moment of silence and please remember, we lost a third grade student at Cedar Grove, I believe it was yesterday, who'd had a long-term battle with cancer. And remember that family as we observe moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, number four, first order of business tonight is to select a chairman. You're gonna make you a major if you do that again. Anyway, first order of business is select a chairman, 2010-2011 school year. At this time, I'll take recommendations for board chair. Mr. Blair?
Yeah, I nominate Dr. Mark Burns as our next chairman.
Okay. Are there other nominees? I guess it's necessary to do a roll call, I guess by acclamation we'll select Dr. Burns to be chairman of the board. Please, we need a vote on that, Jeff?
You do need to vote on it, so please.
Okay. Well, let's just do a roll call vote on it. How about that, for Dr. Burns? Is that okay? Yeah. Everybody in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed, though? Is that done appropriately, Jeff?
Good job.
Now, take over, Dr. Burns, please. I heard you were going down here. Obviously, the next order of business is to select the vice chair and Dr. Burns.
Thank you all. Appreciate the chance to serve as your chair for this year. Nominations for vice chairman?
Chairman, nominate Terry Hollis.
Okay. Other nominations? See none. All in favor of Terry being vice chair for this upcoming year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, congratulations.
Aye.
Okay, we're ready for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? There are a good number of items on here, some of which we discussed Tuesday. No questions on the consent agenda? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
Hey, we have a recognition, like Seventh Brigade, JROTC Senior Army Instructor of the Year, the United States Army Cadet Command, the Gold Instructor Award for the school year 2009-2010 is awarded to Lieutenant Colonel, retired, Richard A. Jeffries, who's a Senior Army Instructor at Smyrna High School, Junior ROTC. Colonel Houchen, you want to step forward?
Well, thank you, sir. I just want to say a few words. Colonel Jeffries and I came onboard together and we retired about the same time, 1996. We both interviewed at Smyrna High School. And again, the principal there, Mr. Rakes, made the right decision and picked Colonel Jeffries. And in the past 15 years, he's really turned that program around. Enrollment, I think, Richard was one, what is it, issue, 170 or?
It started out at 170, we're down to 155.
There you go, okay, quality. But when he first took over, it was less than 100 and near being on probation. And I can tell you for a fact, by going around to visiting very school, various programs within the county, that he has a top-notch program and learning is taking place in his classroom, well-disciplined, respect for both the instructor and amongst the teachers, teachers in the program and also the students in the program. So, sir, if you would, please. There's 179 programs in Seventh Brigade that consist of Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, and Tennessee. So of the 179 SAIs, Colonel Jeffries is picked number one. And, sir, if you'll present that to him?
Great work, Eric. Thanks for allowing us to have the environmental and rough county schools and your mentorship and leadership and principles that make our program a success and we'll keep working on it.
I appreciate it. Just a quick comment. I think before we test this, Colonel Houchen, we've had three or four presentations over the last three, four, five years of all these group. It's amazing the success rate you guys have, that program, discipline kids have, commitment to doing well in their academics. I don't find it unfair, if you wanted your kids to do well in school, to partake in your own initiative from them. So, congratulations to both of you on the job.
Well, I appreciate your support, sir. We have one more here.
All right.
Sorry about that. He now has the Gold Instructor Award. Now, that's the highest. He got the Silver two years ago, and now he gets the Gold.
All right. Thank you. Eric.
That'll be it. I give you retirement.
Mr. Chair, could I add?
Yes, sir.
I was around this program very closely for many years at Oakland and saw other schools as well, but Mr. Gill's exactly right. We have outstanding ROTC programs throughout our system, and it is something we need to be proud of. And a lot of really good kids have been impacted by this program.
Wayne?
Colonel Jeffries and I were classmates, class of 1972, excuse me. What was kind of interesting is, I know we've had three colonels and a two-star general that came out of class of 72. And I'll have to say that probably Mr. Jernigan at Thurman Francis probably impacted them, using the term impact, probably more than anybody else. Your success certainly has to go to a board member also.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne, do you want to mention your team's football record that year?
I'm sorry, sir?
You want to mention the high, you want to mention the high school football record that year?
No, sir, I would like to keep that quiet.
But I saw all.
Oh, there you go.
All right, thank you all very much. Number nine.
An assessment update from Mr. Odom. Got to turn around, though, right?
We have excuses.
Yeah.
Several of you have been asking what information we might have. We still do not have a lot of information. I'm going to share some of the things that we have with you tonight to give you a chance to see that. Technology works. What have we received? We have the ACT summary 2009-10. That was released, I believe it was 18th of August, was released. We have writing test results, 5, 8, and 11. We received that back in May, and writing counts approximately one-third of the reading language arts adequate yearly progress. No Child Left Behind. We have the online individual student scores for 3 through 8, and which is, the TCAP is the Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program. That terminology actually works for all of Tennessee tests. We also have high school end of course. Most of the data is still embargoed, but it does not include, we do not have school and system summaries that are comparative summaries. You know, we not got the percentiles. The TVAS site, you sign onto it, and you can sign on it too. Public, there's a public site and one for schools, and they're still 2009 data. They've not updated that, whenever the state releases them. We have been told that approximately 20th or 21st of this month, that the state will begin sending out to schools individual student scores and parent summaries. Now, if they did let us see those online, and what the parent's going to see is basically in the four major subject areas, they will see a scale score, and they'll see whether or not the student is proficient or advanced designation. There's no percentiles on those either, so do not have that. So, let's talk ACT. Interesting in ACT, if you'll look back between 2003, and this is kind of let you look over a number, we tested 1330 students, and this last year, we tested 2,681. Now, the real change this last year, because the Tennessee Legislature mandated that all of juniors take the ACT test, in Rutherford County, we tested 730 more. You can compare 9 and 10. That's a 37% increase. So, and you see a decline in scores, because basically what you picked up now, you're really picking up the students who in the past would not take the ACT test. That wasn't their choice. They weren't thinking about college and that performance. And I have a little graph, and I'll show you that in just a second. But there's only six states, I went to the ACT site, there's only six states in the United States that actually test 100% of the students, you know, on ACT. I think Massachusetts may be the highest, but they test less than 30%. But really, if you took our top 25% of the students and just took their scores displayed, you'd see a very different picture. This last year, you really tested some students who really, with that extra 37%, who, it doesn't count as part of their grades, Mr. Tack can tell us here, I mean, when it's not part of their grade, and you take them in and you're going to put them through a two or three hour test, you just hope they'll complete the test. Totally different situation. But, but it's a good, it's a measure for us. So, I want to say some things here. There's Tennessee's scores. The graph at the left, you can see what happened when we tested everybody in Tennessee. You can see that trend line. Again, only six states. The average tested across the whole United States, about 47%. And Tennessee's testing 100%. But this is where we need your help as a board with us also. There's some things we can do for ACT. Number one up there, we're going to do several things to try to align with the ACT objectives, because the ACT objective's become the new designation for Tennessee high schools now, to look at the readiness, ACT readiness. So, when they did the high school reform, ACT really became much of your objective. So, there's some things that we've got to align to Tennessee objectives, while at the same time, aligning to ACT objectives. But here's where we need some help. As you talk with your constituents and people around the community, the way you get students to score much higher is we have got to get the students to take the benefits of enrolling in honors, advanced honors, the AP and the IB courses. We've got to convince parents and students of that. And the reason I say that is, we know now, historically, they tell us with the HOPE Scholarship, that roughly 50% of the students that receive the HOPE Scholarship in the state of Tennessee are losing their HOPE Scholarship. And it's because of the preparation in high school. So, we've got to get students, you know, people are so worried about attaining the GPA to get the HOPE Scholarship, they want to take all standard level courses. I can't tell you the number of parents that call us and contact us and saying, hell, he's got to have the HOPE Scholarship, that he needs to take the standard level, move him down, move him down. And when it's over, we're seeing 50% are not maintaining. That's very important.
You know, Don, about, I guess it's been, golly, time flies, but two, three, four years ago, remember when we had a standardized grading system across the state of Tennessee? You know, there's been talk for years about a weighted grading system whereby if you took those more difficult courses, you'd earn more quality points, which in retrospect would...
They didn't do that, but they gave them extra points.
I love that.
For the honors, the state board gave them a three extra points that goes on their average, and then for an AP or an IB course, you get five extra points. So, that's a good point, Mr. Gill.
That's, to me, that's a small step, and I don't know, I want to open a can of worms again, but if there was incentive for people to get in, for kids to take those kind of courses, so that parents, more so than kids, weren't worried about class rank or GPA.
Is there any evidence that the grades are actually lower in those honors and AP courses? I mean, I know it'd be difficult, because you have a different set of students taking the two types of courses, but I'd be curious.
You do, a little bit. The three and five points really come in beneficial to some of those students. I mean, they really do. But it makes a difference, you know? Again, I think most of the students that are taking those higher level courses, they're going to have enough points to get the HOPE Scholarship, but they're also going to have some skills when they leave that's going to make them successful in college, and that's what it's about. The third point here, encourage students to take electives that align with ACT, that's taken, and the state board went to the four math credits, and, you know, the lowest one being Algebra I. And also, you have to have three science, and you have to have either chemistry or physics for your science class credit. So, there's some things being done to do that. You'll see Tennessee's ACT scores begin to climb again. But remember, those kids that they're taking this, the more rigorous, it only started last year, and the high school reform, those students are now sophomores, they haven't taken the test yet. So, it's going to be this year and then another year before, those students that are seeing some of that will even be tested. So, that's just something else to look at. Writing scores, of course, in grade 3, 8, and 11. If you look at our scores, kind of taking the, I just took a three-year trend from 2007 to 10, the gain for fifth grade's been 4.2% gain, nine tenths in grade eight. And in grade 11, 4.4%. So, some of our biggest gains from 86% to 93.5% really occurred in our grade 11 students. So, that's some good writing scores, and we're still, of course, working to improve those, but they're approximately one-third of your AYP for that reading language arts, so very significant. So, good pattern there. Yes, sir.
These are not affected by the new curriculum, the new standards?
Not really. It's graded on a rubric, basically, a six-point rubric. I'll tell you something they are talking about doing, though. We kind of now know whether you're writing a persuasive or something ahead of time. They're talking about really mixing it up. And I'm not sure how many fifth graders can really write a persuasive paper. You know, I have some mixed doubts about if that's really the way to go, that you might not be better to bill, you know, where you get up to the high school, you can present your arguments and be more persuasive in your writing, but if they do a twist on us, it's going to be that they're going to mix up about what you have to write about, and, you know, it could be anything for any given year. Now, the other thing that's new this year, and parents will see this, we've changed it, students will be advanced, they'll be proficient, they'll be basic or below basic. In the past, they've had only three levels, advanced, proficient, and below proficient. But you have four. You have basic over here on this side, that's partial mastery, what it is. So, these two will be the only ones that will count for AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress, those two categories. So, parents will be seeing those categories. The 2019-10 TCAP assessment, we had the new and more rigorous curriculum standards. Also, what the state has done with those four that you saw, they changed the identification from minimal competency to mastery level, and it's set by subject. Now, let me give you an analogy I think you'll understand. In the past, and currently now, passing is 70, okay? That's the state board said that. But that's not mastery. It's what they've done is, when you kind of begin to look at the scores and see what they've done, it's more like a C level. So, if you had a 70 last year that might have passed the course, you're going to be basic or below basic, because your expectation level has been raised, and that shows up in the scores, and that's what I'm going to show you. And that's not necessarily a negative either, but people have to realize now that you're looking for a score higher than just passing. That's the big change. Okay, this is not embargoed. If you want to see the whole thing, this went to the State Board of Education on July the 28th and 29th for their approval with cut scores. And here's the point that I wanted to make for you. This is the TCAP achievement, grades 3 through 8 in math. And if you'll concentrate down here at the bottom, this is a statewide score. This column being proficient, this column being advanced. So, across the state of Tennessee, you only have 25.8% of your eighth grade students in math that will be making AYP. Is that a tougher test? Yeah. You can see, so what parents are going to see, I think, is where their student may have been scoring advanced in the past, you know, it may be proficient now. If you're proficient, you might just be basic. So, that's a huge change. You know, we do not, we do not have for elementary, Mr. Blair asked what we have seen, they will let us go in and look at, they said for instructional purpose, to look at student by student. You can go in and look and kind of do some hand calculation, count them up. You do not have a percentile rank for that, but you can kind of count them up. Rutherford County is going to be several percent higher than that, you know? The principals do a lot of time, when they get anything they can get their hands on, they'll do it, but we'll be several percent higher. Yes, sir.
But the good news is that instead of being in the 40s, our system, a degree of difficulty is what, third most difficult in the nation?
Yeah, it depends on who you talk to. It's certainly, they're saying anywhere from second to third.
I mean, that's...
It's, and all in one year. I mean, you've got, you've got a significant jump. Now, here's the reading language arts. That's actually a little bit better. I did two grades. So, you can see it, reading language arts is 41.9%, adding your proficient and advanced. Going down to that same eighth grade, you add 33.3 and 9, you get 42.3. But, of course, what this means is that even in third grade, 58.1% of students were not proficient. And in eighth grade, it's 57.7% of students across the state of Tennessee were not proficient. And you can see how many were tested, 425,000, see? So, I mean, you get the feel. So, it is definitely a very different test, and so when parents receive that, it's going to look different this year. It's going to. Now, here's some of your high school courses to let you see this one. Again, this is Algebra I, End-to-Course Assessment now, and of course, in that one, the proficient and advanced, simply adding the two columns again, across the state, it's 45.6. That means that over half your students were not proficient in the state of Tennessee in algebra. We're going to have a little more than a half, I think. There's so many factors that goes into this. Some student scores do not count because they weren't there enough days, you know? And so, the state goes back and then calculates that. Now, here's where your problems, well, let me wait till another slide and I'll show you. In reading language arts across the state, 58.7% are proficient, that means 41% is not proficient. Now, when we factor in the writing scores for that across the state, I think you'll see an AYP number quite a bit higher, because it's about a third. And you were looking at the 80 and 90 percents that we had in the writing. So, those scores will go up. When reported, is AYP?
So, they didn't change the standard on the writing?
No, sir. But you, these, again, these are on the State Board of Education website. If you want to spend more time looking at it, it was presented to the state board for them to make a decision on cut scores. Now, here's your issue. This is a TCAP Modified Achievement Assessment. This is your special ed students. This is the students who qualify, and it really, it gets down to your lower 2% or so. You've got, they'll allow you to take 1% of your students and give them a portfolio, give about 2% of your students on the MOS test, the Modified Assessment, across the state of Tennessee in grade seven, I just picked one there, in grade seven, in the subject of mathematics, special ed students, 3.1% proficient and advanced. And reading language arts, grade seven, is 19%. That was on the MOS test. The MOS test, back last spring, I brought you a copy to look at some of that, we discussed it at a board meeting, you know? And they went from four questions down to three. If you remember, they changed a little bit of the language in relation to that, but not greatly. And so, here's the point I want to make. When the state changed the rigor in the test, it does not affect students on a linear basis. The students who are above average and average, even though their scores are down, can deal with it much better than a student who has a learning disability, or an ESL student who has language difficulty. Because one of the big changes in the test was the passages are longer, they're more difficult, they're multi-step. So, what you're seeing is, where you saw a reduction over on the other side for your average student, when you start seeing your special ed students, you really start seeing some drops here. So, very effective for those. So, it'll not surprise me all across the state of Tennessee that you're going to have multiple systems, we may be one of them, that'll be on target for special ed this year in math, or reading language arts, or possibly ESL. It's the change in the test. Just very different. And here's, here's the current, No Child Left Behind AP requirements. This for 2009-10, it would have been 89% in grades 3 through 8, and 86% in math. You look over here and you look at the reading language arts for high school, reading language arts is 93, and math is 83%. Well, if you remember over here, you was looking at 25% in someone math, you know, for a lot of eighth graders. Some of the others were a little higher than that. But it obviously tells you, if you stick with this, these two, which was approved with the No Child Left Behind AYP, you're going to have virtually every subgroup in every school in the state of Tennessee on target. You know, that, I mean, that's, I mean, that's just what's happening. All right? What the state is proposing is this. The state is proposing, and they have not received permission for this yet, they kind of got some verbal approval, I think, but they do not have permission. And that is, let's look at the elementary. From the 89%, they're proposing that you count 32% for proficient. For math, instead of the 86%, which was on the old scale, they'll take 20%. And over here in your high school, instead of 93% in reading language art, they'll take 49, and instead of 83, 25%. But now, there's a thing that hasn't changed in these, you say, oh my, the news media may try to really chase this somewhere. They haven't changed the law. It's still, in 2013-14, it's still 100%. So, what you see happening is, I put a star for where we are now. Now, you might have got by last year with 20% in math, but this year, at the end of it, you better have it 40. They doubled it. So, you're still going for the same ending target of 100% in 13 and 14. So, it's huge increases over the next three to four years. That's where it stands right now. And this will only be in place if the federal government gives permission for them to use that, because the additional rigor and the new tests that were involved in it. And again, that's not in writing so far, at least, wasn't last week when they told us. Okay? So, just to kind of get, let you take a look at where we're going right now in testing, I won't read all this to you. These are the common tests, elementary. There's something coming this fall in grades 3 and 7, a constructed response test. We have not had that, and that's, that's where you respond to a question by writing an answer. It's not a multiple choice. It's graded on a rubric again. And in fact, the company Measurement, Inc., that grades their writing tests, will be grading this. It'll be piloted in grades 3 and 7. We have, our grades 3 and 7 will be piloting it also. Next year, in grade 7, it will be operational, it will be part of the TCAP. That's a whole nother area to think about. That's brand new. For high schools, this is your gateway. We're adding this year Algebra II. It was piloted last year, so Algebra II will be an end-to-course test. We're piloting English III in the spring of 2011. It'll be operational in 2012. All of your high school end-to-courses, last year and then 2010-11, will count 20% of the second semester grade. After this year, it will go to 25% of the second semester grade. Okay? That's where it's going. Now, Tennessee also, if you read the news this week, with other states joined, has received another 170 million to create some new assessments, and that would take place in 2014. And that will be four assessments per year in each subject, and it will be formative and summative, will all be blended together. We do not know what that looks like. And that'll be based on the new national core standards. Tennessee is telling us, when they compare the national core standards in math to the ones that Tennessee has, it's already a 90% alignment, and the reading language arts is in the 80-something percent alignment. Some of that difference in alignment might be in simply in which year you teach a skill or concept. So, I assure you that even with the national core standards, Tennessee has already made the move to that same rigor. And you can see that kind of from the test, questions from anyone.
So, the bottom line is, we're going to get some negative publicity over the next few months, potentially, not just us, but...
Well, I think the board, you need to know that. But again, please help us getting kids to take the more rigorous courses in preparation for... But, but again, please help us getting kids to take the more rigorous courses in preparation for, for that. We'll be better off in the long run, but there's gonna be a period of time till we get back there.
Questions for the board? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Let's see, ten.
Facilities, Stewart's Creek High School. We have with us tonight Architect Joe Binkley, who is responsible for, in part for the design of Segal. And he's gonna talk about Segal and potential for Stewart's Creek High School along with Mr. Clardy. So, gentlemen, step up.
I just wanna briefly run through a few things on some questions I was asked last night and then we'll get Mr. Binkley and get him into his presentation. Segal High School is three hundred and seven thousand square feet. The cost per square foot was sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents when it was built. Total budget out there with everything included, FF and A, fixtures, furnitures, that kinda stuff, was, and technology, was twenty-six million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand. Cost.
Does that include stadium?
No, sir.
Okay.
The stadium was two, about two point eight million. Cost of Rockvale, a middle school, was a hundred and five dollars square foot. Cost of Whitworth Buchanan was eighty-eight dollars square foot. And the cost of Oakland Middle School was eighty-five dollars square foot. Current budget for Stewart's Creek High School is forty-nine million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And that includes the design, the fixture, furniture and equipment, and the construction. The cost, I got an email from the contractor who works for us also, is doing Lebanon High School. Lebanon High School is forty million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. At three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet, that comes up at a hundred and ten dollars a square foot. But, the school system is not included in the contract. School system buying all the roofing. There's no landscaping in that contract. The state curtains, the gym bleachers, the exterior bleachers for the stadium, just all kind of items were not included. The school system buying separately from the contract. I know we haven't publicized this very much, but I did a survey of building cost from other school systems. I think there's ten or twelve schools on here. I'll just give you a quick rundown. Bedford County, and this is pure building cost, no site cost included. Learning Way Elementary, a hundred and thirteen dollars a square foot. Community High School was a hundred and forty-six dollars a square foot. Sumner County, Portland Gateway Elementary, a hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. Westmoreland Elementary, a hundred and thirty-five. Wilson County, Mount Juliet High School, a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. Watertown Elementary School, a hundred and twenty-four dollars a square foot. Williamson County, Nolanville School, a hundred and forty dollars a square foot. West Franklin Elementary School, a hundred and twenty-three. And Spring Station Middle School, a hundred and thirty-seven. And remember that, that's pure building cost. And we built Oakland Middle School for eighty-seven and Whitworth Buchanan for eighty-nine dollars a square foot.
Clarify for the board, if you would, Mr. Clardy. I mean, first off, you know, we've gotten recent point where I think we've simplified our design about as much as we can with respect to, you know, offsets in the building, the reduction of the cupolos and the columns and all other cosmetic additions. Yet, at the same time, you know, I think the community wants some kind of a appeal to the building, you know, you don't want a nasty building stuck out there. But, for forty-nine point six million, how did we, one, get to that figure? I mean, what's that, does that include geothermal?
That's geothermal. We're also, it includes the stadium. That includes all of the furniture, fixtures, the design fee, the site work and technology. And it could be, now, these prices are based on some of the earlier pricing that we used. So, we could come in cheaper, but we've left that number the same without reducing it. Right now, with the interest rates low and the economy and the building industry, you know, it's a great time to build a school. And Mr. Binkley has several items. We're hoping in this design that, to do some green stuff like solar parking lot light, solar water heating in our concession stands and those kinds of things to get a little greener. And he's got a list of those things. Also, last night, I was asked about people that were on our peer group review. And I'll just quickly run down the list here. Mr. Don Odom, Assistant Superintendent, Phyllis Washington, High School Coordinator, Kim Day, Math Coordinator, Kay Nixon, Career Technical Coordinator, Fred Blair, Food Services, Shirley Vale, Special Ed, Steve Solomon, Hardware Systems Technology, Amy Blanton, Instructional Technology, Gail Vick, High School Principal, Lynn Pater, Purchasing Agent, and Richard Zago and Larry Creasy, who are the principals at Stewart's Creek Schools, because we wanted them involved because of the traffic situation and for them to help us with that. Also, just briefly, the schedule, if I can find it here. We have had our first peer group meeting. We're going on nine twenty-eight, the Health Ed Subcommittee, the Finance Committee on ten seven, Full Commission on ten fourteen. And hopefully, it will pass there. If it does, they have from ten nineteen, ten, to six twenty-nine, eleven, when the construction date starts to borrow that money. And we have the money for the design and other projects that we want to amend into the design fee. So, that would leave them with the construction money to borrow. Construction would start, the bid opening would be on six thirteen and start construction on six twenty-nine of eleven. And then, of course, have it completed by two years later in maybe May or June before school starts in two thousand thirteen.
You know, also, I asked, Mr. Clardy met with Principal Durkash and Principal Bud Rakes, and I asked him to, to request that they develop a layout of where they would put portables in the event that we didn't have a school in two thousand thirteen. And I think you can anticipate, based on the current, what, sixth through, sixth through ninth grade, that we'll probably need at least twenty portables each one of those sites in addition to the six, seven, eight they have. It's pretty interesting where they would be located, around all the way on the outside of the football field, parking lots. We just really no place to put them. Is there Gary?
Not really. And I have those all laid out now and I have them color-coded in the year of what's existing, two thousand eleven, twelve and twelve and thirteen. So, I have those all graphically illustrated now and I'll bring those to you.
I know you've been working on it, I appreciate it.
And, go ahead, Mr. Clardy.
Just, just a couple of questions. I know last night, Mr. Tagg had mentioned about the two-story, you know, two-story concept. Just curious, based on this eighty-eight bucks or whatever for Oakland Middle or Buchanan, going up two stories like that, how much would that knock it cost down, square foot?
I don't know, really. I know it would come down some. Lebanon High School is three stories in areas. But as Mr. Gill pointed out last night, you end up with that extra two floors of concrete and beams, which are plus a, a wearing surface over those concrete planks. So, I'll try to get an answer to that. I just need to look at it pretty, pretty closely before I say anything.
Is Lebanon two thousand? Lebanon High School, a student population of two thousand?
I would say it's either two thousand or twenty-two hundred. I don't know exactly. But it's three hundred and ninety-eight. It's almost four hundred thousand square feet. Segal is three hundred and seven thousand square feet. So, they have probably ninety thousand square feet more than the size of Segal. If there's no other questions, this time I wanna present Mr. Joseph Binkley to you. And he has a short presentation. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming, Mr. Binkley. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Dr. Burns and members of the board, Mr. Gill. I appreciate being before you tonight. And I've got a brief presentation, kind of a broad brush, to bring a little history of where we've been and a current status report on where we are, based on the Segal Plan. This first slide shows the entire property at the Stewart's Creek Campus. And on the left, the rendered master plans, see if I can get this pointer. Well, the colored master plan there. You'll see the elementary school and middle school to the left side there. And then, the footprint of the future high school on the right side, with the ball fields below that. When the property was purchased and we began to design the master plan for this campus, it was determined for a number of reasons, but primarily with site circulation, traffic flow, that the elementary and middle would be constructed first on, on that western side of the, of the campus there with the high school on the right. We did a topographic model that you'll see on the right-hand side of the slide. And this is actually housed in Mr. Clardy's office, if any of you would like to look at this up close sometime. But it not only shows the buildings in white there, but you'll see in the foreground, the large detention pond that is put in place and the ball fields to the right as well. But it gives you an idea of the, of the 3D aspect of the, of the campus. This is taken directly from the construction documents of the elementary school and middle school to show in the planning phases what was developed for the high school. And you can see on the high school side of the main drive, a significant amount of parking shown, the football stadium to the south, southwest side of the high school building. And, and then the other fields as well for softball, baseball and soccer, field house as well. This is, of course, in the planning phases with the town of Smyrna for the elementary and middle school, the future high school was discussed and a number of the decisions that were made for site design were implemented at that time. Our civil engineer has already made contact with town of Smyrna to begin the process of opening up that dialogue again for the planning phases for the high school. And we're looking into issues such as traffic flow, circulation, the adjoining streets. And, you know, some improvements were made by the town of Smyrna at the time of the elementary and middle school. And we would anticipate a further implementation of that once we get into the planning phases for the high school. Jump ahead of myself. Just a brief overview of the plan. You're familiar with the Segal Plan, but as Mr. Clardy mentioned, it covers three hundred seven thousand square feet on two floors. And one of the aspects of this design that was an intentional design feature to assist in the ease of construction, equate to cost savings, was the equal bays, the equal widths of, of each corridor bay. And you can see across the front on both first and second floors, the primary classroom corridors. Administration is in front in the red, Library Media Center in the, in the aqua color. And then, the whole focus of the plan centered around the, the outdoor courtyard in the middle. One, one early reason for that as well was to open up as many exterior walls to natural light as possible. So, this brought in natural light. Got good use of windows all around the building. Excuse me. And then, to the rear, the auditorium centering on the courtyard there, shown in, in a brownish color. And then, the athletic facilities in the back with two gymnasiums and the intermediate weight rooms, locker rooms and so forth. In a minute, I'll, I'll speak briefly to the peer groups and the way we've begun to look at the Segal Plan. We've begun to put together an exterior view, a rendering of the Stewart's Creek High School. And over the next few weeks, we'll be looking at color to work into that. But the idea is that since the campus plan is in place with the elementary school and middle school, we would bring in compatible colors and materials to the high school. Metal roof, slope metal roof for the high school building, brick colors. And we would anticipate the use of three, three different brick colors similar and compatible to the elementary and middle school. And then, what is shown a little bit differently from the Segal building is the portico at the front. And so, as we studied this architecturally, some elements like that, we wanna relate to the architecture of the middle school and elementary school on that campus. So, then, once in place, all three buildings work together and, and look compatible on that campus. So, this'll give you an early view and, and we'll give you an updated view soon. This is what we're looking at and studying in terms of sustainable design or, or green design, the buzzword these days. And this is just a sampling of items that are worth considering. And a sampling shown in red of areas that we're already implementing on the new schools. Because there are a number of things that, that count for sustainable design that are already being put in place. What we're investigating in, in terms of some of these new areas are cost-effective ways to provide energy consumption or items that would have a payback that is in a reasonable timeframe. Some have a greater first cost, but then have that payback such as the case on the geothermal mechanical systems, that makes sense to put those in place because that, that payback has turned around so quickly. We have, on the mechanical plumbing and electrical side, looked at a number of things that are currently being done in other schools. And our consulting engineers have, have begun that process to investigate what would make sense for this building and for Rutherford County in terms of sustainable design. So, this gives you just an idea of some of the things we're looking into for that. As Mr. Clardy mentioned, the, the peer group meetings have begun to look. As Mr. Clardy mentioned, the, the peer group meetings have begun to look at the Segal Plan, look at each area of their expertise. And, uh, there are obviously some programming changes, uh, that will be made for the Stewart's Creek High School that are different from Segal High School. Some in terms of the years that have passed and some in terms of the demographics and what programs are, are, uh, being identified to offer at Stewart's Creek. Also, um, with the makeup of that group and those who have known and worked with and used Segal through the past few years, uh, looking at areas to modify or improve after using that building for a while, uh, suggestions to make as well. So this is, um, I think this is invaluable use of our, our time here early on to give, uh, give plenty of time for planning and implementing these changes to the Segal Plan while, while working them into that whole template, uh, that's already been in place. Once again, thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions and we'll, uh, have more information later, so.
Questions for Mr. Binkley?
Would it be possible to, or have you thought about including a couple of students in this peer group process?
That's a good idea. I, I think that may have been mentioned, but.
You know, have been around four years and have pretty good sense. That might be interesting to get their perspective on that.
Let's do that.
I'd almost forgotten, but Mr. Gill had also mentioned, uh, inclu- including a board member or two. So I think that'd be a good idea for, uh, to decide maybe who would be included in that.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank, uh, yeah, Donald.
Uh, it was mentioned last night about, uh, floor plan of, uh, Segal. I, I, I'd like to see those too. Uh, we're talking about the Segal Plan. I'd like to know. I wish we'd been through the Segal High School, but I'd like to see, uh, floor plan. Keep that on file as we go through this process. Have it for reference.
I'll have Mr. Binkley send them over electronically and then I'll print out some copies to hand out.
Wayne?
I would like to see the sheet with the, uh, green initiatives also.
What I'll do is get a whole copy of this from him and, uh, print them up and hand out a copy to everyone.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good. Other questions or comments about this? We had considerable discussion last night, of course.
Okay. Well, thank you all for that presentation. I think we're ready for B.
Let me get the lights, please. We have a status update on maintenance. Well, I guess you're going to use PowerPoint again, aren't you? Okay. Status update on maintenance and technology work orders.
I'm gonna be very brief on this, but, um, in our hardware and systems technology group, uh, we have had about twenty-seven hundred work orders since, uh, July one to date. And of those, we've completed about twenty-one hundred of those. And we are waiting on equipment and different things and scheduling to get the rest of that done. Also, in maintenance, from seven, one to eight thirty-one, we had about twenty-five hundred work tickets. And most of those completed, uh, we, uh, did quite a bit of overtime during the hot spell that we had to just keep all the air conditioners going. And, uh, we're also in our capital improvements are installing, um, new air conditioning systems. And we've already completed Laverne High School. And we're going to, uh, do Riverdale and Oakland, the annex buildings, which includes about twenty units each in those. So those are through the wall unit. And we'll be working on those as soon as they come in. We've had a very difficult time in getting the equipment because with the economy like it is, no one's stocking parts to build them. So they're having to manufacture the parts and then get them into the plant and put them all together before we can get them. So, um, I just wanted everyone to be aware of, we have a great group of people, the maintenance, uh, Mr. Kenneth Curly, um, Steve Solomon, who's leading our technology group over there. There, uh, we have a great group of employees and they're getting a lot of work done. I just wanted to make the board aware of all the work that they are getting done.
Donald?
Overtime, uh, Mr. Clardy, uh, have you, uh, calculated how much overtime pay we've, it's increased our budget?
Uh, I haven't really calculated, but I have been warned by Assistant Superintendent of Finance that we were using a lot. And, um, we will, uh, as discussed with him, hopefully have a little bit of surplus in our ending fund balance to move in there if we need it. We're not sure we're gonna need it, but we may.
That was my concern, that, uh, how much of our maintenance budget were we eating up, uh, making this call. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to make a quick comment. I, I, I'd to thank and congratulate Kenneth Curly on the job he does and the maintenance staff. I think almost anybody on the board that's had any kind of dialogue or discussion with Principal Here's on a regular basis, how proud they are of the maintenance department. Those guys have really stepped up over the last few years and done a great job. Sure, a lot of it has new you, Mr. Clardy. Uh, but, you know, thanks to those guys.
And thanks for those numbers. They tell the story, don't they? How much is being done.
Okay, C.
Holloway Annex Electrical Relocation. Murphy's Borough Housing Authority is in the process of upgrading the Highland Heights housing units behind Holloway High School, including putting all utilities underground. They plan on renting these newly renovated units to lower-income working families. Bill Lord, Deputy Executive Director of the Housing Authority, has requested permission to replace the existing overhead electrical feed for the annexed building at Holloway with an underground feed. Murphy's Borough Power and Housing Authority will furnish all trenching, conduit, wire, and equipment to the building and Rutherford County Schools Maintenance Department will do the connection to the annexed building. Recommend that you approve relocation of overhead electrical line feeding Holloway High School Annex Building to underground. The board will be responsible for connection to the annexed building only.
Second. Discussion?
I, I assume that, uh, this is costly minimal. It didn't have any figure with it, but based on what we had, it'd be thirty.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah. Eleven thousand.
No, less than a thousand.
Oh, less than a thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. D.
Uh, purchase offer Cedar Grove Elementary School property. DCT Industrial has submitted a purchase offer of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred ten dollars for two point three two seven acres of property from the Cedar Grove Elementary site adjoining the Mid-South Logistics Center just off Industrial Boulevard. Posse uses this property as for employee and freight trailer vehicle parking for the center. And we recommend that you solicit proposals for sale of two point three two seven acres of property from the Cedar Grove Elementary side adjoining the Mid-South Logistics Center. Successful proposal must include an appraisal of the property at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board.
Do I hear a motion? So moved.
I'm sorry.
Discussion. Wayne?
If the appraisal comes back, probably won't, but the appraisal came back a little bit higher.
Uh, I mean, we don't have to sell it, we don't have to sell it at that price. We have discretion over selling, so if it came back higher, we could demand that, that money, right, Jeff? Let Jeff read it.
I don't know. Wish Jeff could talk to you.
I was talking, I was talking to you. I was, I was trying to actually fool you guys.
We'll have to sit down.
As I understand it, it's just a proposal to, uh, you're soliciting proposals. You're not going to be signing a contract just yet. So you're not going to be contractually bound to sell the property at what, at any price until it comes back to the board and you agree to do that at that point.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Terry?
So we're not gonna do nothing as far as with the property till it comes back?
Right. Yeah, it'll come back to the board.
Grant?
If we go through with this, where would the funds, uh, be, uh, placed?
Uh, Board of Education, I presume.
It's, it won't be designated necessarily, uh.
No.
We have done that both ways in the past. Uh, we have tended to, uh, put it in the building program so it could be used later on for land purchases.
But if, if the property's deemed to the county commission versus the school board or to the county versus the school board, the, the, would the funds go to the county if that were the case?
Uh, again, they, the county has been very careful to use those funds for a later school board building program.
Okay.
Issue, so. Yeah. I, I, I think that land would be deemed to us, don't you, Jeff?
Most likely.
Yeah. That issue came up a little later on.
Okay. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
E. Smyrna Primary School Classroom renovation. Dr. Gail Vogel, Principal of Smyrna Primary School, has requested permission to turn the stage area into, in the cafeteria into a classroom. Project includes removing the existing stage, building walls, installing a ceiling and floor covering, and bringing the area up to local and state life safety codes. Uh, Rutherford County Maintenance Department will do the work. It costs approximately fifteen thousand dollars. And we recommend that you approve construction of a classroom at, per Smyrna Primary School cafeteria stage area at approximately fifteen thousand dollars. Project will be funded through the maintenance budget.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. F.
Blackman High School Soccer Storage Building. Uh, Principal Gail Vick has requested permission to install a ten-by-ten metal storage building adjacent to Blackman High School Soccer Field for storage of soccer items. It will be furnished and installed at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Uh, recommend that you approve installation of the ten-by-ten metal soccer storage building at Blackman High School at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Sorry.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. G.
McFadden School of Excellence Playground Addition. Uh, Principal Clark Blair has requested permission to add playground equipment to the playground at the back of the school. The estimate for the equipment is twenty-five thousand dollars and will be funded through the McFadden School of Excellence PTO at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. And recommend that you approve expansion of the back playground at McFadden School of Excellence with funds for the project coming from the McFadden PTO at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Eleven.
Uh, we're having a, we, we have a, an insurance update. Ms. Barnes, would you please step forward and handle that?
We have three things to, uh, share with you this evening. First of all, since June the first, we've been going through a dependent eligibility verification process. Uh, on June one, all of our employees were mailed information about this, this eligibility verification and given an opportunity to voluntarily remove dependents from their plan who probably shouldn't be on there in the first place. An example might be a student who had graduated from college in December but was maybe still on that plan. So a voluntary removal. And then, following that voluntary process, the additional information was mailed out in July with all of the information about your dependents. Who was on your plan, what, uh, eligibility verifications needed to be met, what documents needed to be sent in. And that entire packet was sent out to everybody on the plan with dependents. Uh, employees were given until September seventeenth to finalize and send everything in in order to maintain their coverage on the healthcare plan. We have been monitoring that through our office in conjunction with the insurance office and been sending out now weekly reminders to employees who still either have not submitted or still have incomplete submissions to the Socova Company, who's the contracted company working on this for the insurance department. And so we think we have a very good grip on what's going on and, and the number of people who are still affected and what they need to do. I'm getting emails constantly from people when I send something out to, and they're asking, or saying, I sent mine in yesterday. I just haven't gotten a reminder. So, yeah, I think that, that personal communication has helped to move this process along. Um, I think we were at seventy-some-odd percent completion last, on Friday of last week. And again, a lot of people were looking for materials from their college-age students where they've just started classes and are waiting to get that form from the college to, to prove that they are enrolled in the fall. So lots of little things, but I believe everybody understands what they need to do. Any questions about the dependent eligibility verification process? Uh, the second thing is open enrollment. And this year, the insurance company, excuse me, department has recommended that we do open enrollment in October rather than November this year. The reason for that is because they'll be turned around immediately after and start dealing with healthcare reform. So they wanted to get open enrollment done a little bit sooner this year to clear that path for the next thing they have to address. Because there are so few changes in open enrollment this year, they're not going to go to every school and have individual school meetings, but rather they're going to have large meetings at several high school sites here at the central office and in some county general locations for employees to attend if they so choose to. We are going to do a payroll stuffer to announce the information and give them an overview of what they will be seeing during open enrollment. And then they'll mail a postcard to every employee's home with that same information. And then they're additionally going to print and deliver to all of our school sites. The, I think it's about a nine-page packet with the total information laid out, step-by-step process of what they need to do. This will be the same process they've done for the past three years, so it ought to be a very friendly process. It's all done online through employees, so all of our employees ought to be familiar with it. I think the only change this year is they're changing vendors for the life insurance, uh, provider. Moving to Jefferson, is that correct? I'm sorry. I don't remember the name. But anyway, they're moving, they're changing that vendor. And so people have an opportunity now to enroll with, uh, no stipulations and pick up additional insurance if they choose to under that life insurance plan. And then the third thing is, uh, the Gadsby forty-five guidelines, regulations. I guess about three years ago, Mayor Burgess presented this topic to the insurance committee and the need for Rutherford County to start reviewing the Gadsby guidelines in an effort to protect the viability of the entire post-employment benefits program for all employees. So probably two years ago, the, uh, mayor appointed a subcommittee who in turn started studying the topic. Uh, several actuarial studies were done to determine how different plans would affect employees and how it would affect the total annual required contribution, which is what Gadsby causes you to look at. And I think when this program started, it was about thirty-one point three million. And now with the changes they've, uh, incorporated, it drops it down to about twelve million at this time. Again, the subcommittee met, would make recommendations to the full committee. There'd be discussion. The full committee might send it back for revisions and changes. And then the subcommittee would go back, do another study. Trying to look at all of the different aspects of the changes and how employees would be affected, looking at that group of post-sixty-five retirees to make sure there were no changes there, looking at pre-sixty-five retirees, looking at people from twenty to thirty years and so on down the line, so that you would be looking at different levels of employees and their time in Rutherford County. So this final plan was recommended in May. And, um, there was some concern about it from a group of people who actually were not going to be able to have their insurance benefits continued because they didn't meet the guidelines. Uh, Mr. Sambig did ask at the insurance committee last month to come back to the table and provide an opportunity for those people to pay a hundred percent of their coverage if they could just continue with the, uh, healthcare plan. But it, there was no support in the subcommittee for that to move forward. So at this time, the plan that was adopted in May is the one that stands. And I, I guess I can safely say that the county commission has the full authority over this at this time.
At the insurance committee, we have three reps on that out of fourteen, despite having perhaps as many as seventy percent of the insurance, uh, clientele in the whole, in the entire county. So, you know, when things good happen or when things bad happen, we probably don't deserve credit. We don't deserve blame. All we can do is fight for our folks with our three votes. But as you say, ultimately, it winds up for the full commission and they have found say-so. So maybe if somebody's dissatisfied, that's who they need to lobby.
And I guess I can also say, Mr. Gill, right now... And I guess I can also say, Mr. Gill, right now, that's the way the plan stays, but in two to three or five years, it could change, certainly change again because we know what healthcare costs are doing in the country, so.
Terry had a question.
Yeah, I was just gonna make, I know back when we had this discussion before, I brought it up, but bringing it to board's attention before you have, before y'all actually go to a meeting. Are you having an agenda before y'all go?
We receive the agenda about a week before the meeting is announced, so often when we get the agenda, we don't have a board meeting that correlates with that timeframe. So, that's when we try to write this up to inform you about what's going to be on the agenda.
I guess, and I understand what you're saying, but I guess I'm going back to, we, it's hard to believe this board can't be a voice for all these employees. And I just think if there's a big issue out there, we ought to know something about it, or all the employees ought to know something about it, so we can at least put our two cents as a board to both, you know, both of you who go represent the system. I just, I guess where I'm getting at, I just want to try to stand for them before you have the, before you go to actually make.
Other, Wayne.
This is one of those decisions that hurts your heart, and at this time, we're not rezoning anybody or we're not making the decision to, to harm anyone, or, and it just, I, I agree with, with Mr. Hodge, you know, it's, I, I feel like we, we've got a set of employees out there that feels like they were promised a, a certain benefit during their career, and, and, and now that's being changed, and, and, and I certainly agree, we certainly want to have a viable health program, you know, for our present and future employees, and I, I don't want to second-guess the subcommittee, but, you know, I, I really feel for these, for these employees that are affected by this, and I, I wish there was something that, that we could do to help.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Paul. General discussion. Terry.
I know, just looking at this, this paper we got here on the attendance, Mr. Kelly asked, well, I'm just, just looking at this thing for my own sake, oh, just curious, on the alternative schools, Daniel McKee and Smyrna West, how many of those students are actually carryovers? From the previous?
Probably, probably several of them, probably zero tolerance into the school. There've probably been very few been remanded already this year unless it was a zero tolerance offense. Basically, two ways you get in, you commit a zero tolerance or you're, as principals call them, frequent flyers, the ones that are perpetually sent to the office for, for some, one reason or another, so I suspect most of those are carryovers and the rest are somebody's committed a zero tolerance this year.
Zero tolerance from last year, right?
Most of them, but some would be this year. We've had some zero tolerances already this year.
Okay, I mean, I'm just curious, you know, based on that, I was gonna say, if we've already got some of these numbers since the first year, there aren't much people acting up, it looks like.
Well, we got a bunch of people, period.
Kind of brings me to another question then. If you reach capacity at our two alternative schools, what do you do?
Well, we do reach capacity at our two alternative schools, and oftentimes, we have to, we do reduce the amount of time a, a remanded kid at particular stages and go, and allow them back in high school, of course, high, and middle school on some occasion, but the high school principals aren't always happy about it and don't blame them. But it's a, it's a, the issue is all about space and having someplace to put them. You know, I think, I'm going on record right now, saying Kittrel will never be a, an alternative school in this county, but at some point, as we continue to grow, there probably is a need for a third alternative school or expansion in one of those two schools or something.
Donald.
Mr. Gill, I appreciate you saying that. I was just sitting here thinking, I wonder if, if it would be our proclamation for Kittrel would be appropriate at our next board meeting if we could get that written up, that it will forever be a community school, K through five, at this, at this point, maybe with the property out there that, in the distant future, that'd be a good complex for the community, middle school and high school, but, well, they have a hundred and twenty-nine acres or something now?
Several acres.
So, what, Wayne, is that?
Big, big place.
So. What is our like, likely to be our growth from last year to this year? I know that this number, the thirty-eight-four-ten will drop somewhat.
Jeff used the number of four percent, didn't he?
Just under.
Just under four percent.
So, I mean, it, it won't be quite fourteen-hundred students when it all is said and done with.
Well, if you compare this time, same date a year ago, I think it's between eight and nine hundred, isn't it, versus the end of year till today?
It would be, it would be more than that.
Would it be? Okay.
And this is in a year where the economy's down and there's not much movement?
Right.
Does that make you a little nervous?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Does me. I mean, what happens when the economy takes off again, if we're getting seven, eight-hundred, nine-hundreds?
You know, we hadn't bought a portable in a long time, we sure have moved a bunch, but I don't know how we, I don't know how you're gonna survive another year like this again.
Very few forecasts out there are projecting a, a substantial improvement within the next two years, hopefully within the next four, so.
Right.
A recession always takes a, a little longer to, a lot longer to get out of than going into.
Still, if we're growing at the rate of a school a year in a recession, that's what we're in.
What was the highest percentage of growth that we've experienced in the last ten years? Was it eight or nine or ten?
We picked up seventeen-hundred students one year. That's six percent, five or six percent, wasn't it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That was maybe four years ago, four or five years ago, and it was followed by roughly fourteen-hundred kids the next year.
Okay, other discussion?
Okay.
All right, Terry.
We had considerable success getting Oakland and Riverdale's addition by taking the county commission to both those schools, and once they, once they witnessed the hardships that kids and teachers were facing, they were more receptive to adding on and, and, and also sympathetic to what teachers and kids were dealing with. That said, we've been working over the last two days, I want to make sure that I let you guys know before we send out the, the letter, but I'm proposing to have a letter ready to mail out in the morning that on September the twenty-first, right, Ms. Michaels?
Yes.
And Ms. Michaels has checked with Mayor Burgess's office, make sure there's not a meeting at, at the courthouse, that we meet with the county commission here on September the twenty-first, have a bite to eat, then load up on a bus and visit Smyrna and Laverne and let them see how their land locked down there, let them, let them talk to Mr. Rakes, let them talk to Dirk Ash, and then spin back by Blackman, hopefully get back here by seven-thirty, and they'll get a, get a sampling of what it's, you know, what those guys are facing with down there, and also give them the numbers that we've, we first, that we put together last week that reveal the sixth through ninth graders who someday will be ninth through twelfth graders. Also, Mr. Clardy's work with respect to where the portables will be laid out, you know, and how they'll deal with it, and how far kids will have to travel to get in and out of building, even if we can get that many portables on-site. So, it's gonna be a mess if we don't get to school, and I, I think it would be, you know, sage on our part to, to work it from that angle. So we'll be mailing a letter out in the morning, and you guys will obviously get a copy too.
That sounds like a good idea. Other discussion? If not, we're adjourned.
Bingo. Yes, sir.